On June 1st of 2017, according to the Times-Cell Record again in an article dated January 31st of 2017, quote, "Kovac to become independent agency funded by billing for services," closed quote. Quote, "The corps' budget for 2017 is $161,371. Of that $150,000 is expected to come from billing. Only $11,371 will come from village and town property taxes. Three ambulances and a flat car will be sold at a price negotiated between the town and Kovac and a lease negotiated for the ambulance building on Clinton Street. Last summer, the town and the village suspended that lease and no longer collected that lease payment." December 2017, the appointment of 2018 officers, no record that I could find. December 2018, establishment of the 2019 officers, no record I could find, open source. December 10th, 2019, the 2020 officers were elected. Chief John Jack Boyle, Assistant Chief Sean Boyle, Captain Joe Reardon, First Lieutenant Stacy Magg, Second Lieutenant Robert Kirchner, Chief Executive Officer Kristen Sebastian Boyle, and on down the line. Between August of 2020 and December of 2021, a year and a half, the Orange County DA's office conducted an investigation that resulted in a 91-page report regarding Kovac, their institutional practices and their spending. The final disposition, Jimmy, where did you get this? That's a closed case because no charges were filed. Well, I spoke to the investigator, who was allowed to speak to me, after I spoke to DA Hubler, and then I spoke to DA Hubler, and the district attorney gave me this statement. Quote, "A complete lack of comprehensive bylaws and operational procedures led to poor institutional management at Kovac. However, the investigation revealed no missing funds or criminal liability by any members." And that's the only statement that he will give. So let's see where the leadership that was there at that time, where it goes going forward. December 10th of 2020, the 2021 officers are announced. Chief John Jack Boyle, Assistant Chief Sean Boyle, Captain Joe Reardon, First Lieutenant Rob Kirchner, President Krista Sebastian Boyle. May 9th, 2021, an emergency membership meeting was called by Kovac. Now, this is an open meeting, and those meeting minutes are in the public domain. They're posted inside your shop, on the bulletin board. And at that meeting, the then-Vice President Kirk Han, who's currently the sitting OEM Coordinator for Cornwall, requests attended resignations from Chief John Jack Boyle, President Krista, Kristen Sebastian Boyle, and Treasurer Paula Sebastian Howard. Now, at that meeting, apparently, and give me one second so I can pull it up here. Not there, not there. At that meeting, which was held on May 9th of 2021, I just want to give you some of the highlights with no names. There was a discussion referenced the divorce from the town in 2017, the increased expenses as a result, and a viable business plan that had not been put together yet and still had not come to fruition. Then someone says the treasurer's report is, quote, "useless," close quote. Discussing communication with membership of financial difficulties, someone says, "We are in a hard place financially, so why did we order all those sweatshirts? We can't even pay our staff." This is an odd communication, exact words, of a real financial position. Members complained that they were in leadership positions and did not get access to financial documents as requested, not provided, including the Vice President, who it says on here, was not entitled to see anything, including why the gas cards were being used to let officers fill up their personal vehicles, mileage reimbursements, and no fuel card statements, no second signatures, nothing that was remotely in the bylaws to cover this. Now, things change. Barnes &amp; Noble adapted, right? They didn't have a big store anymore, they went online. Borders folded, not having bylaws, rules and regulations for membership on how to use a gas card, because when the bylaws were written, back when we still had horse-drawn buggies, we haven't evolved. Someone else complains, "We have sweatshirts, they look great, but no pagers to get out and answer calls. This is difficult, it communicates a bad sign about us." Reputation comes up, what does the public think about us? Someone says, "People, quote, 'are afraid to speak up because they're afraid of retaliation.'" Someone says, "People are also afraid to speak because the way they are responded to when they say something." They also say there are people who participate in the cooperative effort of running this place, and there are people who do nothing. And when you say something, they get upset and yell. They don't know how to talk to people. There's a lot of backstabbing. Someone else says paperwork from 2016. If you did something wrong, you got terminated. There were consequences, not now. Someone else says, "There needs to be a disciplinary standard that is objective." I have an issue with the leadership. It's not a personal issue. I have spoken to the leadership, and I am a person that has a philosophy that I'd much rather have an army of lions, oh, I'm sorry, an army of sheep led by a lion than an army of lions led by a sheep. And the recycled leadership, it's not personal, but having the same people go into the same positions over and over and over again is the definition of insanity when you see this. And I haven't even gotten into call responses. I understand that COVID crippled the industry, but this goes back way before this. Now, why do I say this and why is it so personal to me? Because for five years as the Crisis Management Coordinator for the FBI's New York City Office, a city of 8.4 million people with a large EMS system, I was the Crisis Management Coordinator and dealt with operational medics. There are a lot of people that do great work at Kovac, but we're failing. You've admitted that you're failing, and also the model is changing. So I'll switch now and quickly give you one example. Last month, I attended a meeting up at the New York Conference of Mayors. They have it up at Saratoga. And at that meeting, there was one, there was a class entitled "The State of EMS in New York State." What is the state of EMS? Well, everybody believes that you are an essential service, but you're not. All of us believe that you are an essential service in the first step in healthcare, but you're not, not by the legislature and the governor's office upstate. You're not an essential service. And without the state and without the county doing things, what are we left to do? They looked at us and they pointed to us in the room, to the mayors and supervisors, and said, "It's on you and your boards, handle it." So we are. So what did we do? We went and looked at other models. What's working and what's not? Where do they have a county-wide system versus a town-wide system? And where does it work? Where does it not work? What's the difference between rural areas, like in way upstate, suburban areas like we live in, and urban areas? How is that working? Well, there's a lot of stuff available online. And so, I availed myself of it, and the supervisor did as well. A comprehensive study of the Sullivan County Emergency Medical Services System conducted by the nonpartisan Benjamin Center was conducted in September of 2020, looking all the way back to 2017. Now, these are all over the web, the internet. And I could pull ones from upstate, but this is a, this is a county that is right next to us, contiguous to us. So what does it say? From the executive summary, because I'm not going to read 140 pages. From the executive summary, "This was conducted at a request by Sullivan County government officials for a study of, quote, 'all aspects of the EMS service system currently in place in the county, including, but not limited to, response times, call volume, advanced life support availability by time of day, day of week, availability of volunteers, and geography to determine if improvements can be made, and if so, what expectations of the residents of the county.'" There are 17 EMS services in Sullivan County. All but one company reports that significant numbers of their members are not regularly able to respond. That's not your fault. The dirt of volunteers is not your fault. This is a leadership issue and a changing paradigm issue. This is a case where the sum of the parts is not better than the individual component parts. And here's what they say. "A creation of a new system needs to happen. In Sullivan County, looking at rural ambulance services, they did not develop as part of a larger system. They were created a long time ago, sometimes independently, sounds familiar, sometimes as adjuncts of existing organizations in an ad hoc, highly decentralized, community-based fashion to meet a local need." That's what you did in 1955, and it worked for so many years. And some of the hate mail that I received, yeah, I got hate mail. They read your social media stuff, they, I get hate mail. And the calls that I got, the profanity-laced tirades that I got, some of them were from former members. And you know why? They remember what it was like in 1970. They remember what it was like in 1980. They remember what it was like in 1990. Some of that is the model has shifted. We can't do it all volunteer services anymore. In New York State right now, in the last 20 years, we've gone from 75% all volunteer to 25%. You're not all volunteer. You're, you're ad, you're, you're ad hoc. You've got, it's a, it's a hybrid. But the issue is, and what came out of this report is, there has to be a parental organization, and then there has to be agencies out of that. Now, response. The data utilized for this study is from 2017 to 2018. For this study, they looked at a national study from 2017 of over 1.7 million cases showing an average emergency medical response time to 14.5 minutes. That's about twice the time for suburbs and more than twice for urban areas. That's what we're looking for. We had access to New Windsor's data. We were not always given the data that we needed from Kovac. That is a stone-hard, cold truth. Transparency is everything. So as you look at this, and you look at the response times, New Windsor's response time to us is a little over seven minutes. That's what I want my Mrs. McGillicuddy, who lives on the corner of Walk and Don't Walk, goes into a cardiac arrhythmia and needs a response. That's what I need. I understand not having volunteers, but we have to do something different. In conclusion, the county-based EMS, we're not going to get that in Orange County. Trust me, I've tried. We're not going to get it at the state anytime soon, but there is legislation that sits there and just makes the rounds year after year after year to name you as an essential service. I don't know when that's going to happen. It won't be while I'm sitting here, I can promise you that, but I hope it happens one day. The county-based system is something similar to what we're looking to do. Local leaders and officials with statewide or regional perspective agree that a town-based system, as reliant as Sullivan County's currently is on volunteers, cannot survive in the middle and long term. A county-based system, not necessarily directly operated by the county government, but with county responsibility for assuring that quality services delivered is more likely to achieve economies of scale and recruit and retain providers for a longer period of time for career, salary, and pension reasons. In closing, the challenges that we face are not unique. They're in the state, they're in the region, and are across the country. Several other counties that have studied this matter have arrived at similar conclusions regarding mergers, consolidation, work sharing. County-based systems have already been recommended for Columbia and Essex Counties. Putnam County has instituted one. Dutchess County has been urged to consider the creation of a county-wide public authority to deliver EMS services. And a study commissioned in Tuckins County wrote, quote, "Unification of resources and entities has demonstrated the potential to eliminate duplicative equipment expenditures, improve response times, and standardize the accounting, billing, and budgeting of organizations. Furthermore, studies have shown that it helps to reduce these duplicative operational administrative costs, as well as share equipment expenditures, oversight, and quality control. In addition, these studies show that it can improve flexibility in deployment of responders, management of call volume, as well as regional collaboration." The reason why these two boards, and everyone's going to get an opportunity to speak up here, and you're going to get an opportunity to speak, have come to this conclusion. It makes the only sense for the path forward for Cornwall. Everybody's going through this, and the resistance, and I've experienced it for a solid year. Supervisor and I met with the new president of Kovac this morning. It was a delightful and refreshing meeting with Mr. Conley. Imagine if it had been that way when I sat in those meetings with Supervisor Randazzo. Open to different ideas, open to suggestions, transparent. The reason why these boards are in this position, and the reason why this was not publicly discussed as some people have brought to our attention, is this. For the same reason that Mayor Coine did not put it out on Front Street when we were looking to purchase the Donaghy Farm property. We were dealing with contracts, and we couldn't make a move until we knew for certain that the gold standard. Jimmy, you must have something in it for them, right? No, I was two and a half hours away at a conference of mayors being briefed by EMS personnel across the state, and New Windsor came up. Why? Because they know about their response rate, and they know about the type of operation it is. And as I said, we don't want to burn Kovac down, but it has to be built up from the ground floor. And it can't exist the way it is existing right now. So how do we do that? We had to make certain that there was a way that we would have coverage, rather than going and telling you that we don't want you to do it anymore and then not having the backup. That's why this wasn't done in a public information hearing in front of everybody, because when contracts are negotiated, you don't speak about them publicly, whether it's the PBA, the CSEA, or Emergency Medical Service. So when people want to say, "Well, you're not being transparent." I've been doing this for a year, and this is important to me because I've had a dog in the fight for a long time, longer than many of you, not all of you, because I know there's some older folks, but many of you have been doing it. And this is, this is the biggest issue right now on our plate. We don't take it lightly. We respect and honor the service that you folks have put forward, and we hope that if we move in this direction tonight, after all's been said and done, that you folks will come on board and look to build something new again in Cornwall. And with that, I will yield the floor to the supervisor of the town.
Sure, so let me just be brief. You know, I'm going to talk about, so as you know, the COVID-19 pandemic, it really highlighted many issues that have been prevalent in the administration and operation of ambulance service throughout the state. From staffing to funding, all of the issues that we've all spoken about for the past year. Cornwall and COH sought to address the funding issues starting last year, providing Kovac with $10,000 a month, and New Windsor with $12,000 a month to provide ALS service. The goal was allow, to allow Kovac time to recover. You know, and look, to their credit, they did improve the response times and the number of calls. But this is just not about calls and response times. This is about, you know, this is about the organization. This is about in New York State where they are providing a service on behalf of the municipality, we are taking on risk, we're taking on legal risk if they don't, if they fail to operate. They're also operating out of a town property. You know, if certain incidents happen on that property, the town can be held legally liable for what's going on there. And so this is why it is paramount that you have good leadership, you have a solid board, you have good bylaws, you have all of these things in place. And so for the past year, while the mayor and I were kind of getting up to speed on all of these issues, you know, at any point in time, we made it very clear that we were looking for new leadership. But yet, it came at the 11th hour. I believe new leadership came, what, two days ago?
Tuesday evening.
Tuesday evening. And so now you expect us to, at the 11th hour, save Kovac, but where were you the past year? You expect us to basically forget, you know, everything that has transpired over the past year and expect us to basically have your trust. This is public safety. We can't just rely on trust. You know, you're basically saying, "Trust us, we are finally willing to make the right changes and do good by the town." But it's the 11th hour, and, you know, and both of these bodies have to act. We cannot, you know, delay this any longer. And so, and just bringing up some other contract issues, you know, having worked for the YMCA of New York City for seven years, dealing with city and state and federal contracts, I cannot imagine any of those contract agencies contracting with Kovac to provide a service. I mean, you know, we would have been, had the, there are certain standards you have to meet when you're receiving public dollars. Do you think the state of New York would contract with you to provide a service, given the sad state of your board, making these board changes at the 11th hour? I mean, that just shows an organization in disarray. How can you be trusted with public dollars and with public safety? And so, you know, I'll also say that, you know, I do think, taking everything into account though, you know, the village and the town, we've, you know, we've sort of come to this decision where we need to look to the future. It's time to act. We have to make something happen here. We've waited a year. And so, I'm sorry that you've made these changes at the 11th hour, but we believe that, you know, for the good of the town and the village, you know, that we have to act, we have to make the right decision here. And so, you know, we're hoping that Kovac will, you know, this morning we met with Sean, Sean Connolly. And so, you know, part of that discussion is, you know, we believe that no matter what happens going forward, we are hoping that Kovac is going to work with New Windsor EMS on a transition going forward. So I think the public, you know, can be assured that there will be some type of, you know, transition that will start happening tomorrow morning if both boards decide to act. But we have to act, and now's the time to act.
All right, what we're going to do is we're going to follow the agenda as it is written, and so after supervisors and my comments, we are going to allow for a public comment. Typically, here, our protocol, our parliamentary procedures are three minutes per speaker. Understanding that there are only six people lined up to speak, I, I think it's appropriate, we'll allow you more time than that if you need it, all right? I'm going to go down this list just in the order of people that signed up. And the first one is, it looks like Jeff, but I can't read the last name. Mr. Reisner?
Jeffrey Reisner on behalf of Kovac.
How are you, sir?
Doing well, sir, how are you?
Nice to meet you in person.
Likewise. I am, for those of you who don't know me, an EMS attorney from Syracuse. I represent EMS agencies all across the state, from Messina out to Suffolk County, from Corning to Cornwall. And I can tell you that the EMS situation, as you've heard about here today, is not unique. It is a tremendously sad state of affairs all across the state and across the country. I can also tell you that the EMS system is like a fragile ecosystem that is, where one part is interdependent on the other parts. You've heard about response times, you've heard about agencies responding in certain amounts of time. Sometimes when an agency can't respond, you have to call the next agency, and then they have to come, and then that depletes someone from their area. It is not, when you reallocate resources or deplete the EMS system of resources, it is not unlike throwing a pebble into a pond. It creates a ripple, and that ripple goes out. And in this state of EMS, in the state of New York, for a proposition to deplete a community's EMS resources by taking measures that are going to destroy a very fragile and admittedly influx agency is reckless. Heaven forbid you have a mass casualty event in this town where you need every ambulance and every trained EMT available to respond to an elementary school where there's been a mass shooting. And you have three less ambulances, and you have a whole room full of less people able to make that response. I am unable to figure out in my mind how that makes good sense. Is the paradigm of EMS shifting in New York State? Absolutely it is. Absolutely. And Kovac is here trying to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. Have there been problems in the past? Absolutely, they don't deny that. They came here this morning through their new president with an offer to the town that would cost the town exactly the same amount of money to continue their contract through the end of the year, allowing New Windsor to offer ALS and Kovac to offer BLS, while we work on finding a solution to go forward. Ladies and gentlemen, Kovac has what is called the Certificate of Need, the Department of Health Certificate of Operating Authority to operate in the town of Cornwall. New Windsor does not have that. If you take Kovac's CON off the table by a systematic and intentional contract action, Article 30 of the Public Health Law and New York State Department of Health Policies prohibit New Windsor from coming in and operating. Is consolidation appropriate in the future? It very well may be, but it takes time to do that properly, and it takes time to do that in accordance with the law. Kovac is here, willing, ready, and able to talk and work to be part of the solution. And I would submit that everything I've heard here tonight indicates that the decision has already been made, and I think that that is a reckless miscarriage of justice. I think that that, all the new state of affairs, 11th hour or not, need to be considered. And they need to be considered in the context of what is best for the people of, not just Cornwall, but the greater community. Because when one ambulance goes out, backfill's got to come in for the next call. And a decision that is made here in this room tonight could very well kill somebody in the next town over. Lives are at stake. This is in fact a public safety issue. And to remove ambulances because they can, they are titled to the Certificate of Need holder, Kovac, and to remove EMS personnel to operate those ambulances is likely to lead to lives lost. I submit that the only reason- I submit that the only reasonable path forward is to work to save COVAC and allow them to be part of the solution of future integration. That cannot be done if you take away the funding that allows them to subsist. I can tell you that on an extraordinarily routine basis, I sit in meetings with municipalities and EMS agencies across the state where EMS agencies are unable to meet their revenue needs on billing alone. That is a universal truth in the world of EMS. And that is why, at the Conference of Mayors, they're saying there needs to be a paradigm shift. We don't deny that. We just want to be part of it. And if you take away COVAC's contract, you take away their ability to be part of the solution, and it very well could come at the cost of lives, which I think is reckless, arbitrary, and capricious. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reisner. As I've advised the board and the council, we are not going to engage with individual commenters. The board, after the public comment session is over, will meet in executive session. We will consider everything that's been said. If there's anything that needs to be addressed or potentially rebutted, we will handle it then. But thank you for your comments, sir. And I'm going to go to the next person on the list, Mr. Coyne, Brendan Coyne.
Good evening. Brendan Coyne, 13 Paul and Court, Cornwall Hudson. So I just have a brief statement. I'm happy that the town board and the village board are holding this public meeting regarding emergency medical services and the future of Cornwall Volunteer Ambulance Corps, though I wish the meeting had been held sooner. I understand COVAC has recently had problems delivering services. I read the list of problems on the town website. I also understand that COVAC has had some success in correcting its problems. The pandemic has made the last few years difficult for all of us, including COVAC. It's also made finding volunteers already very difficult even more so. COVAC has been a vital part of our community for nearly seven decades. COVAC has saved hundreds of Cornwall lives and trained many Cornwall volunteers. As chair and now vice chair of the Cornwall Independence Day Committee, I've witnessed the professional service that COVAC provides on July 4th, when our town is filled with visitors. And we probably all know someone who has either been helped by COVAC or has been a volunteer. I know that you have been working to solve this critical public safety problem. I urge you to keep working. To do otherwise would diminish the service COVAC has given to Cornwall and dishonor the legacy of its volunteers. Perhaps a committee, including longtime COVAC volunteers such as Charlie Muller, who was recently profiled in the Cornwall Local, could help find the answer. In the village, we created commissions to help oversee and guide the police department and the fire department. Perhaps such a commission could help deliver emergency medical services. When something is broken, it is often tempting to just throw it away. Let's mend COVAC. Let's not throw COVAC away.
Thank you, Mr. Coyne. Moving on, it looks like, is it Mr. McCarty? Tim?
Hi. My name's Tim McCarty. I'm a lifelong resident of Cornwall. As you see, I have no paper in my hand. I do not make anything down. I speak from the heart. Been a lifelong resident for 60-plus years. Acted for emergency services 40, almost 40 years, 30 years to be exact. Many years as a career and also a volunteer for most of those years. COVAC, RPS, Rock and Paramedic Service, Storm Cancer Company as chief, paramedic at New Windsor, volunteer COVAC. I applaud all the volunteers in New York State. New York State volunteer system has definitely fallen to the wayside, not because of its own fault, but because of the economy. The economy has made it hard for those to stand up and volunteer. Many of us nowadays in the household have to work many jobs and do not have time to volunteer. But yet, we still need these essential services which we are not essential for. I'm, I have very close friends in upper branches, both in the Senate and the Congress, that I'm looking forward in the future to be working with. And I'm hoping to do so to push forward that agenda, to get EMS at the same level as fire departments and police departments as the central employees. EMS for workers are essentials and first responders to come to those houses of the sick and injured, especially for the last pandemic of COVID. How many of us have faced COVID, got COVID from facing the cause? I know I was one. And I know many people who were there also got received it and a few did not make it through. That's sad. COVAC has done a great, great job and I'm proud to serve as a member of it one time. And I have many friends in COVAC. But unfortunately, because of this system, it started to fail due to, I believe, the economy stress and probably some leadership too, as I've been hearing, needs to be addressed. And I think the address that the town and the village board is bringing to the table, and so I applaud them. COVAC is not losing ambulance services. They're not losing buses. They're not losing membership. And they're not losing paid staff. It's merely from what I know and what I see and what I've been reading, it's a joint effort between Cornwall and New Windsor to join together two services to make one good service for the community at hand. Not only will this better to serve the community at hand, both in the rural area of Cornwall where I live, out in Beaver Dam, but also here down in the lower village and up in the mainstream of Cornwall. I applaud the board for looking at this over the last year. And I hope that they follow through and do this very, very important step, not to persuade COVAC, because I think this will help mend COVAC. I think this is a new starting stone for COVAC. And I hope that all of them will stay aboard and help us achieve this goal and to make a better EMS system. I travel around the country, far and few between all over the state. I'm an avid outdoorsman. And I've seen rural areas have nothing. And I've seen very busy urban areas are overcrowded, just like New York City, LA, Chicago, Detroit, out of control. And in rural areas up in the Rockies, when you're 100 miles away from the nearest EMS system. Quick story. I was a medic on vacation out hunting in the Rockies in New Mexico. In full camel, my son, who was 12 years old, had a bad asthma attack. I thought he was going to die with me on the mountains. I thought I was going to have to do CPR on him. We got him in my, my outfitter's truck, traveled about 12 miles, met up with the state police, traveled another 10 miles, met up with the ambulance. I see that there's air coming in the bus. I said, "Hey, you guys medics?" "No." "You're a medic?" "No." "Well, I'm a National Registry Medic. Can I take care of your equipment?" "All right, help yourself." So I brought the sales, started treating my son with a nebulizer, IV, some special meds to help clear him up. Got him cleared and I went to the hospital, going to an Indian reservation. Instead of making a run, we made a left. I said, "Where we going?" "Oh, we have to go to a car accident." I said, "What's the other bus?" "There's no other bus." "100 miles, there's only bus in 100 miles." "You think you have a bad ear?" We had to go pick up a lady who was getting robbed of a car accident with some bandits that just got robbed of a bank. And she was having a massive heart attack. So now I'm taking care of my son and this elderly lady in the back of this bus. Got into an Indian reservation, and here's the moral of the story. You never know who you're going to run into. The ER doctor was from Rockland County. He knew me from RPS. I knew him from Nyack Hospital. That's, that's crazy. That's crazy. I'm telling you, what they're doing here today, you don't ever see that what happened to me in the Rocky Mountains in New Mexico. What they're doing here today, it's a good thing. It's good for COVAC. It's good for the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCarty. Next person on the list is Mr. Chaudry.
Ishwa Chaudry, 13 Bar Avenue, Cornwall and Hudson. So I have no agenda. I am the guy that you're going to come save someday. So I speak from as to what happened to me and what can happen to me. So I'm 64 years old. 20 years ago, I had a heart bypass. So natural course of things says, "I may, I'm going to need some services again." So first, I want to thank every single volunteer. I have no sides to pick. Every single volunteer, firemen who'll save my house from burning, might get my kids out, ambulance people who's going to come take me to the hospital. So when you pick a service, please pick the ones who's going to show up at my house when I need it. All right? Thank you, guys. Whoever, whichever will show up, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chaudry. Next is Mr. Endazzo.
Thank you, Mayor. A few comments that I do want to make. I mean, I go back decades, working with the communities and working with the ambulance corps. I've seen the ups and the downs, the highs and the lows. And a lot of things said tonight, absolutely true. You know, the EMS is definitely changing. But I think you also have to look at, you know, where we've been to see where we're going. And I first will say that I'm very disappointed in what I saw on the town website, attacking the COVAC members and the organization. You have a job to do. You're going to make a decision on this thing ultimately, and that's good for the community. But it's not good when you attack volunteers and an organization that's been around for 70 years. They may have had their failures, and we all acknowledge that. I know, Mr. Mayor, we had the meetings, joint meetings, starting last year and all. There's a problem. There's a serious problem. And the first obligation to make sure that when someone needs EMS, they're going to get EMS and they're going to be trained, qualified, and be able to do the kind of work that's, that's needed in the community. But you don't tear these people down. I'm really disappointed in that. You know, you should have stayed on the high road. You should have stayed professional and address it as elected officials, leadership, for the good of the community. That didn't happen. I'm really disappointed in that. The other thing I will say, and I respect you, Mr. Mayor, but in all honesty, I'm surprised that you had to take the lead on this because you really only represent about 25% of the population. This has been a town issue, always in communication with the village over all the years. And unfortunately, the town dropped the ball on this. For the first six months of this year, whatever it's been, we knew there were problems the end of last year. That's why we had the joint meetings. We met with COVAC, tried to give them all the assistance that we could. Financially, we talked about it. The leadership has been a problem. And they didn't change their leadership. So in the end, that's really been something I think that has hurt them. Good people, good volunteers, but apparently just couldn't do the job. So I think the problem is where you're at right now is you've got to decide, and you can't throw it out and say, "Well, we're going to help them to survive. Maybe someday they'll be back and blah, blah." You've got to make a decision for the community. New Windsor is the gold standard. There's no question about that. They have the best EMS service, certainly in Orange County and probably in most of the state, to be honest with you. But don't throw the COVAC people away. I, I don't know how you're going to integrate it. I don't know whether some of them will actually join New Windsor. But you're also going to be faced with contracts with New Windsor. I mean, the one contract that you're looking at, according to the website, starts out, and I think over the period of the contract, there's about a 17% increase built into that for three years. So how are you going to control the costs and make sure that the services that are delivered are affordable for the residents? And let me tell you, when it comes to life and death, there is no price tag. There, there is no price tag. So you have to spend whatever it takes to do it. But I think you, you've got to look at the, the long run of it here. You've got the ambulance building up there, how that's going to be used if, if New Windsor comes in, whether they're going to staff an ambulance there, which I understand that they're, they're going to try and do and all. But ultimately, you've got the decision to make. But I, I've got to tell you, you owe the Corps an apology for the way that you treated them in the media. And even tonight, going into the detail that you did, let me tell you, we've been, I've been a public servant, you people have been public servants for a long time. And our ways are going about justifying any actions that you take. And it's not bashing your fellow citizens. So it's going to be in your, I'm going to say capable hands. I hope you make a good decision, the right decision. And the community will certainly, I think, support that, as well as extend our appreciation to COVAC for all that they've done. And maybe they will have a future somewhere down the road. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Endazzo.
Good evening. Randy Clark, 286 Main Street, Cornwall. Mayor, supervisor, thank you very much for holding this joint meeting, trustees, board members. Mayor, you did a great job. Answered almost all my questions of due diligence. You went in depth on COVAC. I would just tend to say, give half the in-depth look to New Windsor. They may not be as pure as, as we all think they are. We know they're good. But there may be some issues behind the scenes. The, the CON is, is one of those. My main point I would like to bring apart, point to the, the group, think outside the box. There was a TV show, CBS News covered it. Yes, we all now know this is not a rare occasion in New York State. Roughly 40% of the EMS units are volunteer, and 70% of them are in trouble. There's a town called Socket Harbor, New York, outside on Lake Ontario. Basically, they were closing down. Town's just a little bit smaller than Cornwall. And what they did was, when New York State lowered the age limit for EMTs to 17, they went and to the high school. And they brought back the old guard to train the high school and have a class. Within the year, the EMS unit is now being led by high school students. And it is quite successful. These kids are saving lives. Some didn't even have a driver's license. And now they are doing that. So I would like, like you to maybe slow down, may not make a decision tonight. The money is in the budget to keep the Corps going and solvent for this year. But there's a two-minute video on YouTube of this town. Well worth watching how they got around and brought the Corps back to full strength. And I would just like you to consider that. And best of luck. I know it's a tough decision. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. That's everybody that's on the public comment sign-up sheet. Is there any alibis? Are there any alibis? Yes, sir.
Good evening, everyone. So we did come last minute for this stuff with Kristen. Unfortunately, I can't say what went wrong with that. Information you guys needed, I can't answer 100% that too. Certain things were out of my control. I can say we managed to get our coverage up since January, part of what you guys requested and wanted. I'd really like to see you guys stick with us, give us a, a six, till the end of the year at least. I'd like to see what you guys are talking about. I know you, like you said, you spoke to Sean Connolly, something about with integration with New Windsor. Doesn't sound like a bad idea. Change is needed. You're right. 100% change is needed. But I feel if you close us at this particular moment without us talking about those changes first, there might not be a way to make those changes. There's not, there might not be a way to integrate COVAC with NuVAC. I appreciate you guys working with us. I know it's been tough. I know we haven't been the easiest with you guys, including, like I said, with our board. We were hoping Sean would be able to make some, open up some light on some stuff and be more transparent. I was very happy to hear when you guys reached out to him right away yesterday. But I'm hoping you guys can just consider at least giving us till the end of the year, see what progress we can make on top, on what you've already requested from us, as well as what we can maybe talk about with an integration with New Windsor, to be a giant agency. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Chief. Any, any other alibis? Anybody else in the public wish to speak? If you could just state your name and residence, please.
Linda Muller, 5 Primrose Court, Cornwall, New York. I too have no notes. What I have is a 35-year love affair with that man over there. That's my husband, Charlie. He's been referred to more than once. He's been a volunteer with the ambulance corps for over 35 years. He has served and saved and been part of 3,000 calls. Now, I listened greatly and appreciate everything that was said. What I heard was the first thing you spoke about was lack of leadership. It wasn't about the issues that revolved around the Corps. It was about you didn't like the leadership. I don't think many of the Corps members liked the leadership. However, they didn't have the resources in order to get done what needed to get done on Tuesday. Yet it happened. You talked about the ninth hour. Well, the ninth hour happened. However, it happened, sir. The change was made. The change started in January, where calls weren't dropped, and they're higher than the national standard. The amount of calls missed, I believe, were 32. There were 12 that were primary, 32? 32, yeah, 20 primary and 12 secondary out of almost 400 calls. There's never been a notice that I There's never been a notice that I could find of the total number of EMS calls done by New Windsor, as opposed to the number of calls that were BLS. Unfortunately, what transpired with the previous leadership has left a bad taste in everybody's mouth, I understand that. I'm a businesswoman, so I get that. I work with boards of directors, I am, in fact, on numerous independent boards of directors, so I get it, I get the fiduciary responsibilities. You talked about duplicity, there's a lot of duplicity within our world. We have two, we have two police departments, we have two municipalities, we have, I can't even, I don't know the total number of school districts within this county that are independent, we are a home-rule state, which drives how business gets done. You have a system right now that's working. There is money and supporting COVAC, which is not unusual, almost every ambulance corps in Orange County, with the exception of three, receive financial support from their municipality through tax levy. Cornwall is just the first recipient, happened last year. The change was significant for them, where they could hire staff. COVAC is not a volunteer ambulance corps anymore. It is a balance between volunteerism and paid staff. And so by allowing the support from the townships, they were able to meet their obligations. If you look at the total number of calls by payer, you would understand there isn't enough money within the system to continue to pay for the things that need to be done through COVAC. And so the support that was done between the two of you, from the municipalities, was greatly appreciated, raised the number of calls. The money that goes to the New Windsor Volunteer Ambulance Corps, their support via contract, plus the dollars that they receive from being on the ambulance, the additional monies that they receive, is certainly probably very good for them too. So you have a system right now that's working. Instead of making a decision because leadership was a problem, why not take the time to continue to review opening up COVAC to what they are fine with, bringing in people like myself and others who have experience in business, experience in healthcare, to help guide them to a place where better decisions can be made, both through COVAC and through the municipalities? It sounds like this is a fait accompli, that I don't, not quite sure why we're having a public referendum to discuss this if the decision has already been made. And if it has been made, then I am very disappointed in all of you, because what you said and what you did is not true. Transparency did not happen, and this unfortunately was not in the best interest of anyone. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other, yes, sir, Mr. Gardner?
So I'm Tom Gardner, I'm the Treasurer of COVAC, and I'm also a Cornwall resident, 30 Doruce Lane. I commend you for all the hard work that you guys have gone in through, you know, to basically get all this information and so forth. But I do note that when your history that you were giving about what happened with COVAC stopped basically in May of last year. So what happened in May of last year was, after we had this emergency meeting, and then we actually, one of the problems that you addressed, which was financial, right? And so that's, there's financial leadership and there's operational leadership. So actually, back a year ago, I guess a little more than a year ago now, we basically transitioned from the previous treasurer to myself. And so, as I stated earlier, there's no doubt that the records were a disarray, and I went through all of them myself, and we also went through the process of hiring a bookkeeper as well, who happens to be a trust attorney, right, to help us, so we did a thorough job of it, and we went through all the books, and I went back several years and came to the same conclusion that the DA went through and found out that there was massive lack of proper accounting, lack of proper management of these finances, but no missing funds that I could find. So I just want to point out that there's several aspects of leadership, and we did make an effort to change leadership a year ago, and it seems to be dropped off, some of the, as far as financially goes, and it was left off in some of the other changes that happened. So just bring that to the attention of the folks there. So there was some attention to it, and if we didn't do a full enough job, then, I'm not arguing that, but at least we had some attempt to make a year ago to do that. And I also say that I do think that we have to change, we have to go, the EMS has to change, and ideas of merging and, you know, concentration of services, consolidation of them is the way, the way of the future, it has to be done. And so we just maybe need a little time to do it in a, kind of under, working together with the town and New Windsor and the village, and do it, you know, basically in a concerted effort, and basically, my feeling has been somewhat antagonistic, both from maybe, you feel us from COVAC, but we kind of felt it was from the town and the village, and I'd like to see us work together to solve these problems, you know, I think we really will be able to do so and do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Any other alibis? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Brianna Torino, I'm the office admin now for Cornwall. I started in 2017 with one night a week, that's all I worked. And that now led to this is my full-time job. I work forty-something hours a week, this is my life. When, last year when you came into the meeting, I was under the impression that we were giving everything that we needed, I was not on the board, I really had no recollection. Once things started coming to light of what you needed, we supplied all that for you guys. Coming, when, last week we got the memo sent out, that July first was our last day, we were all, at least I was aggravated, because there wasn't the transparency throughout since January. Meetings had been canceled, not too much had been talked about, except for, oh, the meeting got canceled for this week, so our membership had no idea really what was going on. Come last week, when we got word that we were closing, we all trying to figure out what to do and scrambled to figure out what to do. Tuesday, the president stepped down, and we now have a new president. Do I think COVAC didn't mess up in the past year? Absolutely. Things could have been done different, things could have been done, you know, in a different route. I strongly believe, however, that if you could give COVAC at least to the end of the year, with the new leadership that's in place, the new board that's in place, our numbers that have, went from sixty, seventy percent call rate, up to ninety-two, ninety-three, ninety-four percent, at ninety-six being so far for this month, that I really think that we can continue to turn COVAC around how it was. Scheduling has, you know, opened up to more paid staff, which is fine when we're getting funding from the town that can support that. I personally think that, you know, volunteer isn't what it used to be, I used to be a volunteer firefighter for six years, now I'm a volunteer EMT as well as a paid EMT. For going forward, I think that if you give Cornwall the chance, that we will show you that our ninety-seven percent call rate taken will be the same, if not higher. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other alibis? All right, before we, before we turn it over to the attorneys to explain the process and the procedure on going into executive session, of which we will come back out, so the public is invited to await that. We do have to, because we missed one parliamentary procedure, and that's on me, we did not open the meeting on the other side, we need to do that, and we did not want to engage with the public on a one-on-one, but there are a couple things that I know the supervisor is chomping at the bit to address, I'd like to address, and then we want to let the board and the council speak to. The meetings canceled. The meetings were canceled of recent, because we wanted to meet with you and let you know what the decision was, we didn't have a contract in place. I have an open door here from seven o'clock in the morning, and sometimes I'm here till five o'clock at night, you can always find me, the supervisor, the same thing. The reason those meetings were canceled was because we weren't in a position to be able to give you our final finding on this, on what we thought the board was moving to. Number two, why the fact sheet? Jimmy, why did you go low? I agonized over that two-page prepared statement, choosing every word carefully. I had this man look at it, I worked with this man on it, and I worked with the attorneys on it. I wanted it to be as vague and nebulous, so that no one could say that anybody threw mud or did anything to besmirks the reputation of this proud organization. That wasn't enough. Then the public clamored for more information, why is this happening? And then it started to spread, they're abandoning COVAC, and no one is gonna take care of Mrs. McGillicuddy when she goes into cardiac arrest. That's why the decision was made between the town and the village, to put together a fact sheet. If you don't outline, and I've got pages and pages and pages here, and there's no need to pile on, but if you don't give the public something to understand how we arrived at this, we're not throwing COVAC away, we want COVAC to be part of this. People that are even supporting COVAC have stepped up here and agreed that New Windsor is the gold standard, the EMS in the region. There's an old sports metaphor, when you have two quarterbacks, you have zero. It cannot work side by side, there has to be a parent agency, and that's what we have agonized over and worked on. And why are we rushing to do this, as a few people said, rushing? I've been on this board now for three years, the issues with COVAC go back before then, I've lived here at Eleven Wood Avenue for twenty years. This isn't rushed, I just knew that now was the time that we could be able to pull the trigger if need be, and if tonight this board and this council decides not to do that, I'm good with it, it's a democracy. My vote, Josh's vote, are equal to everybody else here. But please don't suggest that we rush this, please don't suggest that we were not transparent, and please don't suggest that we were not available to talk to you, that's not the case.
Yeah, so first let me just say, you know, look, the mayor and I have been working on this every single week since I took office in January, talking about this sometimes twice a week, working together behind the scenes, you know, the mayor may have been more vocal publicly about this, but I will say, behind the scenes, we have had, I mean...
Every day.
Every day, just looking across the room, seeing who's in here, the conversations I've had with different people about what to do about this, and what's the right path forward. The fact sheet, we felt like we owed it to the residents to put out the facts, because you can't just go on a vague statement. People wanted to know why we actually did this, we owed that to the residents. As far as moving forward, I don't think we're actually throwing COVAC away, I think we're allowing them to be part of the future here, we're allowing them, yes, we want to move to a parent model, an association model, kind of like the YMCA, where you have an association office parent, and you have individual branches. Each branch has a steering committee or branch leadership, with maybe one board member on the parent organization, but that's the model that we think we need to move to. We don't believe that there should be separate standalone, we believe there should be consolidation. That's the path that the mayor and I believe that we should be taking and moving forward.
All right, so what we're gonna do now is, I'm gonna make a motion to belatedly, and this is my fault, open the meeting. May I have a second? All in favor, just go ahead.
I'll amend the motion to, I amend the motion to, to allow, to accept all the comments that have been made in public and by this board since eight o'clock this evening to be part of the record of today's special, tonight's special meeting.
Seven o'clock, excuse me, seven o'clock. All right, may I have a second? May I have a second? All in favor? Aye.
Yes, all right, so I'm gonna make a motion to open this meeting. All in favor?
You need a second.
Sorry, second, yes.
All right, so next item, I'm gonna turn to the attorneys on this. Now, the town council and the village board are gonna go into executive session, and the reasoning for that is, can you put this into lawyer's scope?
Sure, I'll make it pretty simple. You each have to make your own motion to go into executive session, since you're different boards, and as far as the village is concerned, and I think the town will agree, but I'll leave it up to their council, it would be to discuss matters leading to the appointment or removal of a corporation, which is, there's certain specific reasons under the open meetings law to go into executive session, and that is one of them.
For the reason just put forth by Mr. First, I make a motion for the village board to go into executive, may I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And if you would for the town board as well, Mr. Supervisor.
Sure, so can I get a motion to go into executive session to discuss the removal or appointment of a corporation? Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
Second.
Yeah, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, with that, I'm gonna remind everybody, we are going to repair back to the work session room at the front of Village Hall, this room will be open, and the microphones are locked, just please keep that in mind, if you want to have a private conversation, I suggest that you step outside 325 Hudson Street.
You too.
Mr. Quinn? How are you?
Very good.
I'm glad it works.
How was Egypt?
Egypt was quite amazing, Jordan was also. We got to go where, Indiana Jones and the rest crusade, well, that's right. I know, I didn't get to ride there, but I can get my horse.
Sometimes I'm just really happy we are who we are, because it's just easier for us on how we do business. Like I hear it everywhere, I mean, I've heard the hospital there, get you fifty million dollars out of the dish. I don't know how, how you stay a dish and you take money away from them, I don't understand.
Yeah.
It is what it is, it's crazy. I just, this, this for me is, I just feel terrible. This is fixable, this is really fixable, if they just give them a chance. You don't think it is?
It took me forty minutes to judge it for something. I think that's about it, there's a dot, a dot, to make it where they need to.
All right, thanks, Helen. What? They have a hybrid right now. ALS, BLS, it works, ninety-six percent they're making their calls, not one lawsuit. Not one lawsuit, not one. Come on, really? Let's go. What, what is that? Talk to me about service, okay, but don't talk to me about bedbugs. Don't talk to me about, you don't like Christmas, Sylvester, her husband Jack Doyle, or whoever else you don't like. You know, have to make a reason because you don't like, because you don't.
This is Molly, you're being recorded right now, I'm watching this.
It, you know what, at this point, I'm not saying anything that isn't true.
I know, I just, I just wanted to let you know.
So I'm okay.
I just wanted to let you know.
No, alright, it's okay. Um, you know, I just wanted to answer this. I'm not saying anything that isn't true, so I'm good.
He just turned it up key.
Oh, he did?
Yeah.
I just, it is what it is, I just, you know, I feel bad, I don't know, I feel bad, my husband. I feel bad for him, who's given thirty, almost thirty-seven years of his life. Yeah, it's just what it is.
Yeah, pause, okay, pause.
You're looking good, you're like trimmed down, like.
Why are you getting doctorful or something, or a high grade, so?
Which one, you want me to yell at her? I'll be happy to do that. Oh, it had to be John, though. That's right.
He's got the sort of, uh, that, uh, meeting.
Oh, she's good too. I gotta go, I've got to go. I am absolutely frozen, I'm so cold, I'm a warm up.
So is the bar in the store, can I see the bar? Hmm. Are we in paper? I'm sure. Yeah? Your time uses, graphic diminution. Okay, what was? Two more? You don't mind? You want some? You inspire me. Is it your watch or? Danny, can you find some here? You're not going to touch it? Take some?
Well, this is what I can do. I was hoping they put the heat on, maybe. Actually, Jeannie, does there, yeah, where I can do it all?
If you go on here, make a right, make one, two, or something like that.
Okay.
All right. We're back. Mics are still hot. Keep an eye on them.
You know what? It is cold.
Okay, oh, from executive, so.
Icebox?
Will you use the motion, Jim?
Why it doesn't?
He's finishing up his junior year.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
They're graduating middle school.
All right. We'll do it first. We have to make a motion and come out of executive going back in open session. And you'll do the same thing, and then just take over your board.
Okay.
All right.
Well, I don't have to write it down here.
Is this okay? Take a peek at it. It's the last email you sent to me. So I'm okay to read this as is?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I think we've got most people back in here. Hold on.
Sure.
All right, if you find your seats, please keep in mind the mics have been hot and they're still live right now.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for the village board to come out of executive session. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, so I'm gonna make a motion for the town board to come out of executive session. Can I get a motion?
Someone.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there any discussion?
Okay, go ahead. You take over your board, or your town council.
So do any board members wish to say anything on the record about potential actions we're about to take?
Um, I would. I've only been the liaison of the, of Kovak since July of 2021. During this crisis, I have seen Kovak make many improvements. I see many dedicated people who came in, who tried to figure out what went wrong, tried to make things right. And I appreciate that because you did what you, you know, what I, I want for our town. I want our town to, our residents to be safe. And you have worked very hard to do that. This is a hard decision, and part of this is that I've also spoken to New Windsor. I've worked with New Windsor in, on some issues they had with their certificate of need. And I also recognize, and it's been said many times, and I've tried with state representatives, county representatives, to deal with the fact that this is a crisis. Um, and ultimately, we have to do what's right for our community. On the local level, we've worked very hard in terms of financially shoring up Kovak to make sure that they could hire, um, you know, professional staff. Volunteerism is down every place. I get it. And there are a lot of people that are volunteering and doing the right thing, and I, I really want to thank all of you for that. But we have to do what's right for this community. And, um, that decision, I know I can't take very lightly. What I'm hoping, as I know right now, is there is a lot of stress, a lot of back and forth. It's my hope that we come together and together, all you are dedicated to helping people. I want you to come together and continue to serve this community. And, you know, I, I want to sincerely apologize for some of the things that were said on that back sheet. I did not know about it until I read it. I think volunteer, you deserved better, and, um, I didn't think that was the place for it. So I sincerely, as a councilwoman, apologize for that because knowing how hard all of you have been working, I didn't think you deserved that. And, um, thank you.
Okay, so before we move to act. Oh, sure.
Do you have anybody else in the town council wish to speak? Nope? All right, then I'm gonna go to the village board for, uh, on the record comments from trustees, and I'll begin with the deputy mayor, Mr. Kane.
Thank you. So to begin, the village board has been evaluating and reviewing the operations and the metrics of the, of Kovak since last year, since last summer, when concerns were raised, and they were raised prior to that also. You need to know that as a board, we approach this matter in a very, um, in a very deliberative, cautious, and judicious manner, not in a reckless one. We met with Kovak. I was in at least two meetings, and I know there were others. We monitored their operations in 2021 and in 2022. We considered their operations, their delivery of services. We discussed the matters with Supervisor Randazzo, Supervisor Wojciechowski, as well as the town board at length. We discussed it with our attorney on several, several meetings, as well as the attorney in, uh, the attorney for the town with our joint sessions. We considered the over sixty-five years of service that Kovak has provided. We considered the personnel. We considered the leadership. We considered the volunteer hours. We considered the paid hours. We considered the proposal to right the ship and the actions that were taken after that proposal. We considered the financial impact on our residents and our neighboring municipalities. We considered how New Windsor has been providing ALS services to the town, to the village, as well as to New Windsor, and their history of them providing those services. And this was done, these factors, these over dozen factors that I've just pointed out, they were considered through the lens of protecting the safety and health of our residents. In fact, under, in accordance with New York State Village Law, Section four dash four one two, this board of trustees is charged with, amongst other powers, the management and business, the protection of its property, the safety, health, comfort, and general welfare of its inhabitants. Addressing this matter has not been considered lightly, nor recklessly. It was, it was done with all due proper review and deliberation. And as such, I don't believe the platform that Kovak continues to operate on is the best arrangement for our village, both operationally and financially. New Windsor EMS will provide the high-quality EMS care it has provided for us on the ALS platform and what the residents deserve. I'm confident that they will operate in a professional manner and embrace any of the Kovak members that choose to become part of the new partnership. I understand and consider and respect Kovak's history of service. I understand and respect your opinions, your disappointments, your anger, your frustration, whatever adjective you want to do, uh, point to at this, at the village board or the town board for making a heavy decision. I respect you for that, but ultimately, however, I have to consider the charge that I previously mentioned, and that's to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the village residents. And considering where we're at now, it is in the best interest, in my, in my view, the best interest is to move to a different platform. Thank you.
Trustee Cornwright.
Jim, you said a mouthful of words there, but, um, I have to basically agree with, uh, Jim's concept about this. For me, the most important thing is ALS. When someone calls and their life is on the line, that's the most important thing for me. We have, uh, BLS in the village, uh, calls that are answered by, um, our fire department, who do an outstanding job. I certainly respect all the volunteers through the years. I was born and brought up here, so I remember Kovak from the beginning. I knew the Coxes. They lived next to me. Um, they were one of the founders, and so I've been around Kovak my whole life. But I think it comes down to doing what's best for the community, the town and the village. And I think the, uh, a different platform is necessary at this time. Thank you.
Trustee Gaylord.
No, I really have nothing to say. I think, uh, trustee Kane and trustee Cornwright have, you know, said it all.
Trustee Brain.
Thank you. Some contributing factors to the difficulties that are faced by Kovak are obviously out of the organization's control, as have, as we've visited over the course of the evening. Those issues are also faced by other services. Many are struggling, and those are systemic issues that have to be solved systemically. And those issues aren't going away despite recent efforts. Those are still the pervasive issues that are under consideration and that are foundational to some of the difficulties that have been experienced. And so something does have to change, and the one thing that can't change is reliable, quality, sustainable emergency care for the village. To those like me who honor the service of present and prior Kovak EMTs, drivers, administrators, paid volunteer staff, and board members, any change that we vote on tonight casts zero shadow on that service. Your passion and your, and past generations' passion to help people, your grit, and the desire to give back to the community not only can never be erased by a change to the organization, even a drastic one, but will continue as we move forward. These are organizational issues and a potential, as we vote, organizational change. Alternative events like this was forecast. Uh, in 2017, I was at a town board meeting when Supervisor Randazzo advised against Kovak's move to, uh, divest from the financials arrangement that they had with the, with the town. And, and here we are, is my view in part. The proposed resolution regarding Kovak doesn't dissolve the organization. The systemic issues are still active even with the shift to another provider. But based on all of the inputs that we've discussed, and some that we have, you know, summarized, meetings, business plan, board changes, recent and prior, response data, costs, and other factors, the proposed contract will allow the breathing room to continue the essential emergency care Cornwall needs and deserves. And I believe open avenues to long-term, sustainable care, and driven by the same spirit that's animated Kovak for these multiple decades. So I don't take this vote lightly, lightly, as the others have said as well, but I believe it is the right option right now. Thank you.
Sir.
Sure, so, so before we move to act on both of these matters, I just want to say a few words. So, you know, look, I believe acting tonight is in the best interest of the health and welfare and safety of the residents of the town of Cornwall. Let me first just thank the past and present members, you know, of Kovak for all of their hard work over the years. I really truly believe that the path that we're hoping to take tonight, this really is the best way to ensure that the current members can continue serving the community. It's really the only way to ensure that they can continue serving the community. We need, we need to move to this new model to ensure that the residents can have the proper services they need. And we would welcome all of the current members, paid and volunteered, to come be part of this new platform. We certainly know that you have a lot of, you know, you know, loyalty and love for the residents, and you've done your best over the years. We hope that you will continue serving them, you know, you know, out of the Cornwall station because that's where Cornwall EMS is going to be provided out of. You know, Kovak's not really going away. We're just going to be, it's gonna be a new platform, and so I think that's the best way to look at it. And so with that, um, I have a resolution here that would, um, it would basically terminate the current EMS agreement between the town of Kovak, um, between the town and Kovak. Whereas heretofore, the town board entered into a contract with the Cornwall Volunteer Ambulance Corpse for the provision of municipal emergency medical service within the town of Cornwall, including the village of Cornwall and Hudson, and whereas said contract included a license for the use of the Clinton Street Building by Kovak. And whereas the said contract expired and is carried over on a month-to-month basis. And whereas the town does not wish to continue the EMS contract with Kovak any further and wishes to terminate the license for the Clinton Street Building. Now therefore be resolved as follows, that the month-to-month EMS agreement between the town and Kovak shall terminate and no longer be renewed effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and that said license for the Clinton Street Building is hereby terminated effective June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. And Kovak must vacate the premises in accordance with the terms of the said license. And three, that the town supervisor is authorized to sign all documents necessary to carry out the provisions herein. Can I get a motion for approval?
Second, second. Call the roll.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosy?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes. So next up, we have a resolution which would authorize the town of Cornwall to enter into an agreement with NuVAC. Whereas the town board has, has forwarded a proposed contract with the New Windsor Volunteer Ambulance Corpse for the provision of municipal basic life support and advanced life support emergency medical services within the town of Cornwall, including the village of Cornwall and Hudson, and whereas the said contract provides for the adoption of rule and regulations for the provision of municipal EMS service on behalf of the town, a proposed schedule of fees for the provision of municipal EMS service, and a license for the use of the Clinton Street Building as set forth in the schedules thereto, and whereas NuVAC has conveyed to the town board that is, that is willing to enter into said contract to provide EMS services. Now therefore be resolved as follows, the pursuant to General Municipal Law subsection one twenty-two B, the town of Cornwall shall provide town-wide emergency medical service by and through a contract with NuVAC. Two, that the town board hereby approves the aforementioned contract with NuVAC, and that the town supervisor is hereby authorized to sign said contract and any documents necessary to effectuate the terms thereof. And three, that the town board hereby approves the aforementioned rules and regulations for the provision of municipal EMS service, the aforementioned schedule of fees, and the license for the Clinton Street Building. Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Call the roll.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ms. Michael Rosy?
Yes.
Mr. Wojciechowski?
Yes.
All right, my, um, my final couple remarks on this is, uh, is to echo what's been said by my colleagues on both the council and the board. Trust me, as someone that has been actively engaged in this for over one year, this was not an easy decision. Anyone that thinks that this was reflexive, or that this was made in the heat of the moment, I think they could ask almost seventy percent of this room right now, people that I've been on the, on the phone with and that the supervisors have been on the phone with, and members of the board and members of the council have been on the phone with, trying to get to the right answer here. It's not easy. I respect everyone who volunteers. Volunteerism is something that is very important to, to every member of these two boards, and I respect that. And just because the system is broken, and just because these two boards came to the conclusion that for now, what's in the best interest of our residents, thirteen thousand of them, is to go to this new platform, I trust that when the I trust that when the dust settles, people will understand this. For the members of COVAC, some of you are gonna be apoplectic still. Some of you are never gonna want to do this again. I trust and I hope that a lot of you will give this opportunity, this new paradigm, this new model that is going across the state, and you'll be part of it. We would love to see you be part of it and to start this from scratch. None of you in the back standing up were here in 1955, but you could be here in 2022 and help this piece of this bigger, this, this bigger organization work. And with that said, I'm gonna give you a quote from Colin Powell, one of my, my favorite people, the general, who passed away recently, and there's two quotes he said. Sometimes leading means pissing people off. I look around the room. There's some people that are doing the happy dance inside and saying, "This is long overdue." And I look around this room, and I know there's people that are staring daggers at us, and you're upset. And I understand it because there's people in this back that have given a ton of their life and a ton of their time serving Cornwall. And even the paid folks are volunteers because no one's rushing there to pad their 401K with what we're paying them at COVAC. This was a heavy, heavy decision. General Powell also famously said, "You break it, you bought it." We're breaking it. But the supervisor and I were extremely, exceedingly encouraged this morning in our conversation with your new president. And we would love for you to come on board and to help us get this thing afloat and moving forward. We're going to make it succeed. NUVAC has a reputation, and the members of COVAC, there are people that will swear by you. There are people whose lives you've saved in this community. Don't give that up. Don't look at this in a petulant or petty way. Look at this as a tough decision that we had to make. And please, consider being a part of the new solution. And with that, I need to make a motion to close. No, oh, I've gotta do the resolution. Apologies. Whereas the village, I'm gonna make a resolution as follows. Whereas the village board has forwarded a proposed contract with the New Windsor Volunteer Ambulance Corpse, hereafter referred to as NUVAC, for the provision of municipal basic life support, advanced life support, emergency medical service, EMS within the village of Cornwall and Hudson, and whereas said contract provides the adoption of rules and regulations for the provision of municipal EMS service on behalf of the village and a proposed schedule of fees for the provision of municipal EMS service set forth in the schedules thereto, and whereas NUVAC has conveyed to the village board that it is willing to enter into the said contract to provide EMS services, and whereas entering into a contract for EMS services does not constitute, and quote, action, close quote, subject to seeker, or at most constitutes a, quote, type-two, close quote, action, exempt from review under seeker pursuant to Section 617.5 C26. Now therefore be it hereby resolved that pursuant to General Municipal Law, Section 122B, the village of Cornwall and Hudson shall provide village-wide emergency medical service by and through a contract with NUVAC. May I have a second?
Second. There's two more.
Oh, did I miss the back? Boy, I am really striking out on this one. All right. See? That's why we pay you the big bucks. Number two, that the village board hereby approves the aforementioned contract with NUVAC, and the mayor is hereby authorized to sign said contract and any documents necessary to effectuate the terms thereof, subject to final review and approval by the attorney for the village. And three, that the village board hereby approves the aforementioned rules and regulations for the provision of municipal EMS service and the aforementioned schedule of fees. May I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I show five ayes. Anything further other than closing the meeting?
No, that's it.
All right. I'm gonna make a motion to close this special joint session with the town board on May 26, 2022, at 9:00 PM. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So I'm gonna make a motion to close this meeting on behalf of the town. Can I get a motion to close the special meeting at 9:00 PM on June 20, I'm sorry, on May 26?
So moved.
Second. I motion to, okay. Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you. Keep in mind, the mics are still hot, so anything you say in this room will be picked up on them.
John first. Still don't get the hang of these joint meetings a little bit.
I know.